The most common time that you can help somebody is when they're down. And there are a lot of people that are down because they're at the end roads and they don't know where to turn. That when people come into any of our branch locations, that you outreach your arms and you help them. And you see what their problems are. I think that's what we brought to this industry. I think that's what we brought to this community, that we try to outreach to the people that need us the most, and we're here to help serve them.
Good evening. Welcome to the Selectman's Special Meeting of April 7th, 2014. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. Tonight, we're focused on the warrant, as you all know. Adam, I'm going to start with you, with your report.
Sure. First thing I want to do is just run through the documents that you have in front of you tonight. You have the budget in its form of the first two pages as revenues and expenses, or what we call a pro forma. Then there's several pages of revenues broken down by line item, and then a budget summary overall based on department category. And then you have the department summaries for each department. And then with that, following that, we have a discussion of what the override questions will look like, some changes as some things occurred since last week. And then I'll go through the summary again, the impact of overrides. We have a little bit more information from the school district regarding their debt exclusion request. And then we have the warrant. So you will have to take actions tonight in terms of setting the warrant. So you'll vote to place certain articles on the warrant. And then you'll also have to vote to notify the town clerk regarding the ballot questions. Okay? And those are also shown in the front pages of the warrant. So the changes that I made in terms of the budget last week, if you recall, we had a budget deficit minus what the 538, 482 that the school was requesting left us with a deficit of $584,000. And as I explained multiple times over the course of the last few months, that 584 is what's left of the impact that we had last year from the $700,000 deficit that was we were faced with when the Massachusetts Department of Education came in and adopted the school budget. We had that impact, that's carried forward to this fiscal year as we're preparing the budget for next year. And so that 584, with that, we went through a series of, went through a process of trying to figure out what items will be listed on the 584. And I think we had a consensus at the last meeting, what that would be. We went, you know, gone through this process, having department heads come in. You made one cut from what was originally 595 down to 584. And then you listed specific line items after we went through a matrix, or each Selectman or myself put forth items that we would consider to be on that article. So since then, the one change that I had was the Finance Committee members petition to have the, an article placed on the town meeting warrant for adoption of the local option meals tax, as it's known, or the tax that is .75% on top of the 6.25%. And looking at estimates that the Department of Revenue has, I can go through those in a second, and I'll give you some information in terms of the process and how that is adopted. I gave you a map that shows the towns that have already adopted it, and I'll go through that in a second. So what I did was I added that as a potential revenue source if it was passed at town meeting, what it would look like in terms of the budget and how it would address the deficit. So I estimated a potential of $100,000 of additional revenue. I'll explain why I picked that number. And then what I did was I made some changes to the override question. If that's the direction the board chooses, the board could certainly go with what they had last week. But if they're assuming that this new revenue could potentially come in, one of the things I did was make some, I did make some changes to the warrant article, and I'll go through those in a minute. So let me just start with the $100,000 and how I came up with that. So you have a packet regarding, it's from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, and you can see in the shaded areas of all the towns that have adopted this tax. You see Sturbridge, Southbridge, Dudley, Webster, Charlton, Lester, Auburn, Millbury, Sutton, and Worcester being the towns in our general geographical area. The next page shows estimates, estimated revenues, and this comes off from the Department of Revenue, the website. So they actually track it even though we haven't adopted it, they track it for all of the communities. That's because they collect all the information from restaurants that obviously forward their 6.25% to the state. Based on that collection of those receipts, they then estimate what it would be if we had the .75 on top of that. So you can see in FY11, we would have approximately brought in $96,000, and FY12, 111, FY12, 113, and we're about $80,000 through eight months in FY14. So somewhere between 95 and 120 is where we could be. I figured in the first year that I would just budget conservatively, that's my nature, and I'd estimate $100,000 as the potential revenue source. And then you can see in the packet following that is the process by which this is adopted in a simple majority vote at town meeting, is one article. The article would say that does the city of town of Spencer accept General law chapter 64L, section 2A to impose a local meals tax? And then it talks about how, you know, you have so many days to report to the Department of Revenue that that's been adopted, and then after that first quarter, you would receive, just as we do with all of our state aid, quarterly payments based on the collections of that information. They themselves go through the process of working with restaurants and notifying them in terms of who gets it, or actually about the process. But as you know, businesses already, restaurants already pay in 6.25, so they're pretty familiar with the process. So does anyone have any questions in terms of the potential revenue, the estimates that were given by Department of Revenue, the map, or the process itself? So I was asked during the week if this also had to go to the ballot. It does not. It's not going to be on the election ballot. It was submitted by petition, the town clerk certified the number of signatures. It is on the warrant, it will be on the warrant. So you will vote articles tonight and set the warrant. It's not one of those articles that you need to vote to set on the warrant, it's going to be on the warrant regardless. So with that, I can talk about, anything, any questions on that?
Mr. Chair, I had, although, you know, we alluded about it just last week, I did speak with a restaurant where they have to prepare events in advance, and in addition to talking just about the overall rationale for it, wondered about how quickly this would take effect because they were concerned about quotes that they have given out for events that, you know, the balance of the year that they're committed to, and, you know, when would this?
July 1st.
July 1st.
And then we would receive our first payment October after, October 1st, the first quarter after.
So in the case of a business, would they, would they have contract amounts and agreed amount upon amount, they would have to absorb that, that additional cost?
Because they sort of going back to the client and saying, oh, it's going to be .75% more.
Would that be correct?
I don't know what their policy is, John.
But I mean, in terms of, they would have to start charging this effective July 1st, right?
Right. Well, that was one concern. That's a concern I have, but.
In terms of, you know, your, we can hold some of the other discussion, I suppose, until we talk about that warrant. But that was just a question I had about the mechanics of this tax.
Okay. So any other questions?
Mr. Chair, the only concern I have, again, this is a forecasting number after we adopted. So I'm just concerned if we, for some reason, we get hit for 10,000 or 20,000 under that number.
Well, that's why, if you look at the forecast right now, the forecast is 120,000 for this year. Last year was 113, the year was 112. I figured 100 is a pretty good conservative number. I mean, if you want to go with 90 or 92.
Let's just say that we missed that, we missed the number.
It's a guesstimate, just like it is with all of our.
We had to balance the budget with free cash, the.
Not necessarily. What you would have is, it's just like all of our receipts, like excise tax. We're going to go in this year, we're going to estimate, we're going to bring in 1 point million, 1,71,482 dollars in excise tax. And that's based on a five-year history and average, that's where we're going to be. If we come in at 1,060,000, you know, you're $10,000 short, but, you know, there's other local receipts that may balance that, plus there's potential for turnbacks in departments that will, all those will adjust your amount of free cash. If everything else actually comes in exactly to the penny where you are, you'll end up, yeah, you'd end up with a shortfall, but the chances of that happening here are very good.
That's my only concern, Mr. Chairman, is it's new, it's a new.
And that's why, that's why I went with a 20, you know, and not 20%. That isn't 20%, it's actually, it's probably 18, 20, something like that, because it's 120. So, sure.
So this would have been nice to save, in case in the fall, you know, we're going to save that 200-something thousand. We needed another 100, but obviously with this petition, we can't now. So we're going to take 100 off the override, right?
Well, that's the strategy, that's.
Because that was my view, I told you, I don't know if you.
That's the segue into the next discussion. So next discussion is the override question. Well, are there any questions on meals tax itself?
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be on 10 grand, it'll be 75 bucks.
Right?
Right. So not that it's a huge amount, still a tax.
I can tell you, the town I work in, Donnie, they have it.
Is that why Cumberland's Coffee is 105 here and 106?
Exactly. You're supporting the town of Lester, you're supporting the town of Auburn, I support the town of Westboro when I'm there. I spoke to McDonald's, and it was a button on their cash register to change that amount. It was no.
Still a tax.
You know, but you're right, it is. But at least it's spread out across everybody and not just the people in the town.
Some people are paying, everybody can.
It is what it is. It's on the warrant.
It's there, right.
You have to deal with it, okay? So now it's a matter of how we deal with it. How do we deal, how does it impact the question that you want to ask the voters in terms of additional revenue, which would be the increase in two and a half levy by a certain dollar amount? So last week, the number was 584. That was a shortfall that we determined, going through the service reviews, that was the number that, there was essentially a consensus I drafted.
That was the end number, right?
It was the end number.
At all negotiations.
I had the number, and I drafted all the departments and the dollar amounts reference to that. And we had some back and forth and discussion in terms of, you know, what should be on there. You know, there were some variations between the six of us, and there was also some commonalities, and that's how we led to creating what would be on the 584. So you could do two things. One is you could just keep with that 584, and you could move forward with that. That is one option. If you move forward with that option, and the meals tax failed, and then you would, you know, and the override was passed, you'd have a balanced budget with the 584, correct? If you decide that it, you want to go forward and you want to change the number to 584, I gave you an example of my recommendation. What I would do is if you want to assume that that is going to pass at town meeting, which it certainly could, and there's now $100,000 in additional revenue, that is one way that you could reduce the override request. So if you did that, I had the 484, and this is my memo dated Wednesday, April 2nd, and what I did was I essentially put back one of the days at town hall. I know Selectman Berthoud mentioned that he, you know, we had this discussion, he was discouraged that we would be going from four days open down to two days open. So by having that additional revenue, that was one of the things I put back in. And then I made some other minor changes. I added the staff support at the fire department, and then I eliminated part-time position. And I eliminate, I proposed that if the override failed, we would eliminate a part-time position in the station's office and part-time in the town clerk's. Okay? So those are in my memo, and it's summarized on the bottom in parentheses in terms of each department. But everything else is pretty much the same. Okay? So the question is, how does the board wish to proceed? In terms of 484, obviously it lessens the impact. My next memo attached had what the impact would be. The override amount would be 55 cents on the tax rate of 13.15, which on the average tax bill would be approximately $110 to $124 per year. Okay? That's the only change from that number. So there's certainly different things that could happen at town meeting. The meals tax could pass, the meals tax could fail. You get to the override, the town's override question could pass, town's override could fail. So based on those four events, or those two actions, there's potential for different outcomes in terms of what we do. If, whether it's 484 or 584, and we don't get support at the override town meeting, then these are the cuts we have to make. So I'll welcome any questions in terms of.
Mr. Chair, I have another option, just to confuse things further. I am going to go back to what I said last week. I think before we take up the question, the override, I'd still, I'd still like to see some deletions and some outright cuts in the budget to the tune of at least 100,000. And when I do the, you know, when I, when I look at what we're facing, we've got an $8.9 million budget. If we're looking to save $100,000, which is, I said was a goal I had last year, excuse me, last week, and remains my goal, I think it's, I think it's, it can be done, we're talking a little over 1% cut. That's a penny out of every dollar. And how many times do we look at the state and federal government and say, can't they even find a penny on a dollar? It's always increases. I think we owe it to the people of Spencer, not just to take all the municipal reviews that we heard and all the numbers, and add them up and see what we can cover and shift the rest to an override. And that's what we essentially did last week, with the exception of the 14,000 for the, it was 11,000, I'm sorry, for the, you know, for the engineering aid. That was the only one that got cut. I just, we enjoy a lot of trust in this community, and you know how important that is when it comes to government. And I just think we are, if we want to keep that trust, we've got to make a good faith effort to come up with a genuine $100,000 in savings. So what I would say, I would go into the, this one possibility. There are a lot of variations, and I may be persuaded that this is not the combination. But if we went in with a 484, and we also, and if we went in with, that's before anything happened, so that if the restaurant, if the meals tax didn't pass, we're okay, we've made $100,000 in savings, which I think we owe the voters. And if, and if it did pay, I would reduce that further to 384. I mean, we're facing a lot of overrides, a lot of extra costs, and I just, I don't think we can ever stop looking for ways to save, save the residents' taxpayers' money. And that may, people may think that that's, you know, that's money we should be, we should be putting to work, but my feeling is if we can get this budget to 484, and, and the town decides at the town meeting to endorse the local meals tax, and there's a, there's $100,000 we didn't have before, which we can now use to reduce the override, so that, so that I would, I would say go to 384. But I just, I can't say strongly enough, we, what are we doing here if we can't find a penny on a dollar? I just don't get it. I just, it's very frustrating, you know, what are we, what are we worth? And we're not just moving, directing numbers in different columns. It's our job to, you know, to find them. I have, I have specific ideas. I can't go into the offices of the town hall, the offices of, I can't go into the library, I can't, you know, go where the potential savings are. I think that's the sort of thing we have to turn, turn to our town administrator and, you know, to work with, to work with department heads to make those cuts. I, we're not there on the floor, you know, following, mapping out where people are in the library or the town hall. But I do think that there are savings to be made, those numbers feel soft to me. And I just think there are savings to be made.
That being said, anybody else?
Mr. Chair, John, do you have suggestions?
Well, I have, I'm looking at a few areas.
First of all, it's not 1%. So of that 8.9 million, half of that is fixed costs that don't go away. There are insurances and certain causes that we can't cut.
When it comes to staff?
Anything. That 8.9 million, so you're about $4 million that you can play with, the rest are fixed costs. So now we're 2 and 1/2 percent.
Okay, that's fair, right.
So you're taking 2 and 1/2% out of everything that isn't fixed, okay?
Okay.
So your numbers are going to have to reflect 2 and 1/2% instead of 1%. And then I will tell you, when I got on this board in 2008, it was great. When I got on, when we got our numbers for 2009, we got 1.2 million dollars less. So we have not asked for a penny from the taxpayer, not one penny, until, I guess we raised the trash fees, but that was just to cover the transfer station, to make it run for itself, until now. And that's what we were supposed to do. We're not supposed to take any more money than what we need to run the town, and that's what we've done. So we've done insurances and co-payments and regionalization and done all that stuff over the past six years to mitigate that 1.2 million that we still haven't got, we're still down, what, 700?
Still behind, yep.
Roughly 700,000 from what we were in 2008. Haven't laid anybody off and are running more efficiently than you see our audits. So we aren't asking, just to lower that number for the sake of a number, it's the wrong thing to do. We've been doing all this. We have the lowest tax rate around, that's what we're supposed to do. We're only supposed to take enough money to run the town to what we need to run the town. And that's what we do. Our extra money, our capital plan is all, Adam, just estimating receipts from the year before. So if those come in even from the year before, we have no money to do capital. So good fiscal practice, as you've been here for a couple of years, and you've heard Scanlon go over all this, we don't do like other towns. We don't use our stabilization. Last year was the first time we had to use free cash, and that was through no fault of our own. And this year, this budget number, like I said last week, this 584 is zero from the town. If we didn't have to pay that money that we were told to this year, last year, again, we wouldn't need an override. Town services will be fine, we would not need an override. So the monies, we have to pay them the money. That's where this 584 is from. But we can't cut their budget 584, so we have to ask for a minutes blow override, because we can't reduce that number, obviously, with the, that the state gave us last year that we have to pay the school department. So we've done all that stuff. So I beg to differ with you.
Well, then I say, where does it end? I mean.
Whoa, 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 listen, listen, I just told you, none of this is us. This number we have to ask for is because we have to give them more. None of it, if we didn't have to do that, we would not be here talking about an override for us. So where does it end? You need to direct that question to the school committee, John.
The burden is going to fall on the taxpayer.
Exactly, exactly. No fault of ours, no fault of theirs.
But we're in a position to try and make some headway on it, to really, to really take a sharp pencil to some of these costs. I'll give you an example. I know we need to do stormwater management, but we're going from $0 this year in stormwater management to $90,000. Do we really know where that $90,000 is going to go?
All right, hang on, hang on. What would the fee be? What would a fine be if we didn't put some money towards us?
Some, right.
They've been as high as 135,000, I've seen.
But does it have to be 90 in this first year?
What are other towns paying?
I know town Auburn has an entire budget, they have.
You told us it's 990.
They have $300,000 dedicated, they have staff people assigned to just stormwater management, and they're not that much larger than us.
So we're paying less than 1/3 of what they are.
What we're doing, what we're doing is keeping that number low by having in-house staff do a lot of the work. We had an engineering aid doing some of the work. We have an intern, students that have come in over the summer, we've trained them to use the equipment. And then on top of that, we're looking at possibly getting rid of one of our staff. So we try to do as much as we can on our own, but there's certain things that require consultants, because we don't have the capacity to do. You know, I don't know if you realize how many outfalls we have in this community. Every outfall where a drop of water falls out of, we have to test the water quality of that. We're not doing that right now. We've gone from 14 guys down to nine, and now you're looking at costs of losing another guy. And now we're getting rid of any other help in that department, and then we have to add all of that work. You're talking thousands of places that you have to find someone to go and you have to test that water, and then you have to report it to the EPA. Who's going to do that? You know, these things cost money, and if you don't do it, you get fined.
I'm not saying to ignore it, but looking at everything.
We've been ignoring this, it's 2003. The first permit from US EPA came out in 2003. The town didn't spend a penny until I applied for a grant three years ago. Not a penny. We're lucky we didn't get fined. And there are towns around us that have, town of Lester got fined. So it happens. Again, this is, choices you guys want to make, that's, that's up to you.
Well, I think, I think.
Just quick, just, I'm sorry. So if we reduce that to 20 grand, and then we get fined, 130, was that a wise decision? That, I mean, that's gambling, John. I'm all for cutting the budget if you can find cuts that don't hurt or harm services. I'm right here with you, but I can't go with you on that.
You know, I mean, on top of looking at that, and just my 30 seconds of soapboxes, there's things in the budget that we're, that we're not doing. We don't care any money for dam repairs. There's, and we don't care any money for side, barely any money for sidewalks. We don't care any money for surveying, doing roads and building roads. We rely on check to 90, $500,000. Your audit from your road management plan said you're supposed to be spending $1.8 million a year. There's things you're not doing. You go the other way, those things just get more expensive, you're doing less, you're able to do less with less people. Steve stood up here and showed you that. We have all these projects listed that we're going to try and do in-house. Now you want to take a position away or make other cuts in terms of expenses in his budget, those projects aren't getting done. And we're not, and we don't have a debt exclusion on the docket for road repairs. So, but I tell you what, we get calls every day. I get people sending me bills, lawsuits, because they are, they lost their muffler in a pothole. I mean, just little things like that, these things add up over time. And if you go the other way, you're just, you're being counterproductive. I understand, John, that you want to work to a certain number, but I, there really isn't any fat in these budgets. But, and then, and my last comment is that you said, where does it end? We haven't even started, as Donnie said. We never started. Where does it end? What did the town do? We've been asking the employees, we've been asking the departments to make cuts, we've been doing that for five or six years. I think they should be the ones asking, where does it end?
And just to follow up on that, because he's right, the town of Auburn actually has a line item just for that, for stormwater. If we don't do something, John, we're going to get fined. You know, and it's the same old adage, you can either pay now or you're going to pay later. And we've been playing with this for so long, that if we don't make a commitment, and I know what you're saying, maybe 20,000 this year, maybe 15 next year. The one thing I know is this board, and that includes yourself, have picked apart this, I've taken my book to work and I spent hours on that, just trying to figure the what-if scenarios. And I don't know where else it ends other than whatever we take away now is never coming back.
Well, I don't accept that. I don't.
All right, what do you have? Let's hear some more, because I might agree with you on some, John. I just think I can't go with the stormwater.
Okay.
How are we going to fit in next year if we don't put an initiative? I'm just, it's a question.
Listen, he's one of the CEOs of the town. Listen to what he has to say, okay? Give him that opportunity.
Speak when you're spoken to.
Well, he did say we should turn to our town administrator. I welcome the opportunity.
We meant for positive.
Another item that went to zero to, to, to tens of thousands, and I know we caught this number late at night, and we, it would probably, sounded like we were endorsing something we didn't have time to think about perhaps, but in my case, you know, the 28,000, which I see in the, in maintenance for, you know, for the parking racks, again, it's going from 0 to 28. I think it's, it's, we need to show a good faith effort, and I don't want to go on neglecting things, but once again, we've got so much, you know, facing the voters this year, I'm trying to find some, some ways of softening the impact. So I would.
Question was, how we could maintenance for all the parks?
The, the 28,000.
I think there's seven parks, and the average is about $4,000.
Yeah, I originally had 10 in there, and late at night we said, let's go to the whole thing, and I had breadth of that.
I just want to say, the number that they've been asking is the same budget they've been asking, is the same budget they've been asking me for every year, the last four years I've been here, and I just haven't been able to fund it. So we rely on volunteers to change oil to the lawnmower. We rely on volunteers and people on the committee to go down there and do wiring and do all kinds of other maintenance. I mean, it's, it's, I, I understand, John, your point, what we, that's one of the reasons why it was targeted as one of the things in the override. If we want our parks to be taken care of, then we should ask for more money. If it doesn't get supported and it goes away, stay with the conditions that you're in.
Can, can we go down John's list?
No, I'll just give you a, a couple of others. I, again, a lot of these is come down, the, the balance is come down to staffing and, and it's, and there was just a, the, the rationale I've heard from department heads, I really couldn't, it, it still left me feeling like there was some softness to those numbers. You know, for the, particularly the, the library and, and the, all the town hall offices, you know, we, we've, we've, we've proposed different scenarios in town hall and I, I still feel like, you know, I, I need to, need to see where those, where those positions fall in the building and, and what, what it does to our open hours, what it does to, to lunch hour closings. But that's, that's the sort of thing I can, you know, I feel like we can do. That's the sort of thing we need to, you know, turn to our town administrator, you know, to, to, to work out the, the most efficient plan. That's why we, we hire people. I'm just saying, we're, we're in a position of giving direction and this is an area where I would like to be very clear about the, the direction. I'm, I'm not, probably not going to give you the specifics you're looking for, Donnie, because some of these fall into staffing areas. And I just, I don't know enough about the, the patterns in those offices, but I do, you know, you get comments from people that makes you, it makes you wonder, you know, about, about people standing around or reading the newspaper or whatever. We've got a very dedicated staff. I just, we just, we've just got to make sure it's all being, you know, applies efficiently and as, as economically as possible. But, you know, that, that would, it would take a, a vote of the board or, you know, a direction that Adam and I, I don't sense that, that appetite here on the board tonight.
I can tell you, John, I'm in this town hall, the whole building, three days a week. And there used to be a lot more people in here years ago. I don't see anybody lazing around. I mean, because I would tell them, I mean, typically don't, unless you do, when I'm, when I come in the building, is everybody sat working or something?
I, I, I think, John, if you're saying there's a, there's a.
The library, I don't know. I don't go to.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how to answer this without, I don't, um. Well, what I say is a certain amount of workload, John, that needs to be done. And the people here do a damn good job doing it. You take away people to, from their departments or you lessen hours, the same amount of work still needs to be done if you're going to require that the window needs to be opened amount, the same amount of time. You get rid of three people in the, in the tax collector's office, they still have to collect twelve million dollars in taxes. You get rid of one of those people, they still have to collect twelve million dollars in taxes. So, so it's hard for me to, to, comment about reading the newspaper, kind of.
I know.
Offensive to the people I think that work in the building, John. I mean, if there's areas where, I mean, you're not going to be, and you're going to walk in the building, there's going to be some time where you're going to get to a window and there's not going to be a customer at the window. That's going to happen. But you eliminate that person, what happens when the person comes to the window? Bring it back to the board. I mean, if you want direction from me, I, I, I think, how can, how, I don't know how you could go below the levels you have right now without eliminating hours. And if that's something you want to do, I guess my, my whole point, going back to what we started with, this was, this whole process was about service. And I keep hearing, dollar amounts, I keep hearing staff. I don't hear from you, John, is that, you know what? We need to make a cut and it needs to be in the service area. And, and, and I don't understand that, going back the last six months over the service that you directed me to do, outlined for you, marched every department in here. They explained to you every single thing that they do in every single office, every single hour of the day, every single hour of the year, some of them, explain what it took for the staff to do it. And then you tell me, you're, you're telling me you're not, you don't understand what goes on in those offices. And that's hard for me to swallow after sitting here for six months. And then you say to me, you want to target staff, you want to target staff hours and you're criticizing someone for reading the paper. If you want to cut, if you want to make a cut, target the service and say, okay, we're not going to run the parks department. Okay, we're not going to open a council in Asia at the scene, at the, at Maple Street. Okay, we're only going to open town hall one, or, or one less day a week. Then you can demonstrate what the impact on the budget would be. I feel like you go right around the service and you go right to the point of, you know what? I saw a person reading the paper that other day. We need to cut that position because I feel there's some softness in there.
Okay.
It's very hard for me to.
Here's what happens. Here's what happens. You still, and, and we can debate this all night. We're going to get through this. We're going to set a warrant tonight, number one. Okay? First of all, I think what happens is it depends when you walk in here and who's in here and you can never, it's not like we set an appointment, what time they're going to get to the town clerk's office, what time they're going to get to, to pay their taxes. So yeah, you see that lull. I mean, I'm sure at some point we've all seen something. Okay? That being said is, listen, I read the letter last week that was written in two thousand and three and here we are still debating the same stuff.
Oh, Kyler's letter.
Right. Where all the department heads were marched in and said, you better defend your budget. Okay? We've done that again. And there's not a hundred thousand here. I don't care what anybody says because I've been through that book and, and again, I, I know you all carry it with you. Mine's still on my desk at work.
No, no, listen, there's a hundred thousand there. We're just going to lose stuff.
Right. That you're never going to get back.
Exactly.
That's the problem.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I came in last week with, with, with the same, somewhat the same angle of John. I, I don't necessarily agree there's a hundred thousand dollars to be paid at here. But, well, I think what John saw is that he listened, he listened to the presentations, he listened to the services that were provided. And even after those presentations, he thought there was excess capacity in those departments for the service that, that they provide. And that the service would not necessarily go away if, if, if cuts remain. So, I, I had to defend him on, on that one because I asked the questions last week and I got an answer. It may not have been the answer I wanted to hear, but I have to at some point step back and, and trust the management I have out, you know, on the front lines and, and believe in what they say. But I just wanted to defend what John, his, his approach is not necessarily, it's just, as I, as I said a hundred times, Adam, it just, it's, it's hard to, for one, one-to-one to get a service by, by FTE. It's, I don't think it's a, it's an exact match. I just wanted to defend John at some point.
Well, and I, I think it's very important that everybody understands is this is doing our due diligence to, to pick through this and never stop. And, and tonight's the last night to try to.
Absolutely. I, I think my point is that it doesn't matter where you go. If you talk, if you're going to target staff, you're going to, and you're going to end around of targeting, or you're going to impact the service without first saying, you know, targeting the service. And that's, that's my point is that the, the, I think it should be the other way around in terms of, we, we, you know, we're required to provide a certain amount of services, we're required to do certain things. Certain departments take certain staff levels. If you take a certain person away from a certain department and that's what you want to do, fine, but then understand that you're impacting the service. And I think that's what you were doing when asking the library, the library director last week. Okay, if we take away this, what programs are affected? And I think that's, I understand that question, okay? And then you got the answer, but I, I, I don't. It's hard for me to say, John, as a manager of people, say, let's, let's just get rid of people just because I want to get to a certain number. To me, if you want to get rid, if you want to get to a lower number, let's target services. What services do you want to lessen? What services do you want to do without? I thought that was the whole process that we were trying to go through.
Okay. To begin with, I, I apologize if it seemed I was disparaging town employees. That was never my intent. It's, you know, they're there, they're, they're placed there. It's a, it's a question about the most effi- efficient placement of, of resources and people. And that's where, and I'm sorry, some comments that people make to me on the streets sort of stick in my head and that's what, what comes out in a, in a moment of, you know, hot, hot discussion. So I'm, I'm sorry for, for that. And if, and if, and if, you know, to be specific, then, you know, I would, I would go back to closing two days to be, you know, if, if that's what it, it took to make the, the savings that we, I think we need to see. And realizing that the work needs to be done.
But, but, but that's, you, you, we're talking, you, you made this comment about before we go to an override. The two days is a scenario you would want to see with the override to make the number lower? I, I think you're, you start off with the point of, I want to get the four eighty-four, the five eighty-four down a hundred thousand.
Yes.
So you're saying, let's, let's just close town hall a day a week before we go to the override?
That's right. That's right. You know, and maybe that belongs to the override so people can, can choose, but that's, you know, that's, you know, I would prepare, be prepared to, you know, support that. I understand. I know there's work to be done. I know, and, and people have to still be in the offices. It just, we wouldn't have the staff for the windows and that's where the, the savings I would, would come from. But I, I think we've probably heard this out as much as we can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I also make one, one very high-level, three-thousand-foot comment. I think this board could very well.
Did you say three thousand?
High level.
Yeah, high level. This board could have very easily taken the easy way out and copped out and said, you know, the six fifty or whatever we got hit with last year, put it as an override. And, I mean, you know, this includes contracts we've negotiated, correct? This includes increases in the budget and we're still a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand less than, than we got hit with from the amount for schools. So I think we've done our due diligence and, and.
It also includes employees planning higher co-pays, which is something we negotiated on Thursday.
So I, I, I.
This is the second time we've done this.
Yeah.
In addition to changing that percentage of contribution.
So I, 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 you know, while I question this, I also commend the, the, the folks in, from our operations for looking at this and, and, it's been a very hard task, but we, we could take an easy way out with this thing. Thank you.
Anything, Bo?
No, you don't want to hear my comment.
I know. So, John, just if you look through this, Board of Selectmen of Fiscal oh eight to this year is down fifteen thousand. Town administrators down twenty thousand. Town accountants down thirty thousand. These are numbers from oh eight to actual numbers today. Town councils is thirty thousand left. Otis, you know, Office of Developmental Inspection Services is down fifty thousand. Fifteen thousand less for the tree ward. Board of Health has stayed flat. Seventy-five thousand dollars less than Parks and Rec project then was in oh eight. Veteran Services had huge increase, but that's because of the economy and we get seventy-five percent of that back. Seventy-five percent, Adam?
Correct, yeah.
So, I, the only ones that really gone up, I think, you know, with any measurable increase is public safety, which has to.
Well, and part of the fires, a hundred and fifty thousand from the ambulance.
Yeah.
So we took that off.
Exactly.
Yeah, so the fire is relatively flat.
That's the only increase, right? If you look.
So we, we've, we've done all that over the years and, and, but now we're at a point where we can't do it anymore. So, I mean, two things could have happened. If we didn't have to pay that money last year, and the school had it worked out somehow, we wouldn't be here. That, and if we had the money that we used to get from the state, we'd have a couple hundred grand extra this year. So, it's not our fault. We, don't we?
And I know that, and I, but I'm just saying it's, it's.
I'm the last person that wants a tax rate now, you know?
It's, it's still our budget and, and I just, I just, I just want to keep working on it to see where we can make savings in order to, you know, to, to, to ease that impact. And there's a, there's going to be a lot for people to have to absorb. And I'm just looking to see if we could absorb more in, in, in our operations.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll tell you, I'm good with Adam's proposal. For the four eighty-four, we'll take the meals tax off the override. Because we're not going to do a double taxation, then the stars are concerned. I'm, I'm good with what you put together, Adam.
I'll make that in a formal motion.
Sure.
Sure, absolutely.
So basically the, what you would be doing is you'd be setting, what we need is, we need two things, actions. One is set the, one, one is set the ballot question. So you have, you have three questions. One is going to be a town override, one is a school override, and the third is the, the school debt exclusion. So if you want to vote on one of those or all three of those, you can do those and then we'll go back and go through the warrant, because the ballot is separate from the warrant.
So.
But you're the boy.
So what do you, what do you, if you look at the page, the, the second page of the warrant, it lists the three, all right, the three questions on the ballot. Question one, question two, question three.
That's what you want our motion for?
Yeah.
So the question number two is the five thirty, eight forty-two. That's the amount the school has asked over last year. And so, again, and kind of repeat kind of what Donnie said, question number one, the majority of that is, or all of it is, the portion of which was seven hundred thousand from the previous year. So this, so basically in two years, they're increasing their budget by one point two million dollars. Part of it has to come out of the town side. That's why the question number one is there. Question number two is the amount that's for the school over last year.
So the question one, that, that hundred grand, they use that to mitigate some losses in the town hall.
Correct. So this memo, what I did is I took this memo.
No, I saw that.
Incorporated that question into the, into the ballot. And then the third one is the, question number three is the debt exclusion for the school.
Did you get any information on that?
I did. All I got was this list here. This has three numbers, a hundred and fifty thousand, three twenty, and then one fifty.
No quote, you didn't get any quotes?
I didn't get any quotes. I didn't get any quotes. And again, so the question number three, when you do a debt exclusion, it's, you're drafting it such that it allows them to just exempt the portion that they're making the payment on, or the amount of the payment. You're going to exclude that amount from two and a half. So there's not a number listed in the ballot question. The number shows up in the warrant where it says you allow the district to go forward with their six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar borrowing. The reason being is that they can, just like we've done with the fire truck and Sibley and with the town hall, they could structure this borrowing in multiple different ways. They can do over a five-year period, over a seven-year period, over a ten-year period. You understand? So based on whatever structure they have, and then based on what our portion of that is, eighty-one percent or thereabouts, that amount, let's say it's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We would increase the tax levy by a hundred and fifty-seven, and then once it's paid off, we would get rid of the hundred and fifty-seven. And don't quote me on a hundred and fifty-seven, just throwing that out as a.
What switches? That's a computer thing?
What's, what's a switch?
It's a piece of hardware that.
That's Tony, he knows.
That controls the. Again, Mr. Chairman, if, if I, if, if, if my company.
You're a computer guy. What do you?
Yeah, I.
What do you make?
To ask for, for, for town, to ask for town for six hundred thousand dollars and not have more specifics for the voter as far as, you know, the, the buildings that are impacted, the, 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 the computer hardware that's going to be purchased, software replacements. This is pretty generic and I, I'm not saying I'm against it, it's just they're not serving themselves well by having this amount of detail in it.
Is there going to be a better presentation in this town meeting yet?
I should hope so. Now, like you said, they're saying twenty-five switches at five thousand for a switch. If you're buying twenty-five, I'm sure you can get a better price than five thousand.
I don't even know what a switch is.
Well, that's what I'm saying. A hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour, eight hours, put it in.
This guy must be a gold. I have an issue with hardware, but it's.
It's almost as much as the server cost.
Yeah. I, 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 when, when the data was discussed at the first meeting, the school committee meeting, I, I talked to Vinny, I was like, why so many switches? That was just a, a question I had. And, and, and the number of servers as well, I, this, it's just.
What does it do, the switch, Tony? What does it do?
It, it, it controls the, the connection of the, of the data.
Okay.
I mean, hardware could also be the size of the pipe they're using. It could be, it, it, there's a, there's a, there's a lot behind it. As a matter of fact, a citizen wrote a nice email with the same questions and had more detail than, than this.
Doesn't really tell you anything.
Yeah, so I, just, well, just from the, the detail we had to give when we made a proposal to see this, and the voters in this town have been, have always been kind of, what do we spend our money on? From what I've seen, I'm, I'm just concerned with this level of detail. And, and questioned the, and I would question the need for all of it, but.
I'll put the question on, but hopefully they have better information for the voters.
There'll be two opportunities. Well, there'll be one opportunity for questions, which is at a town meeting. So, the, the request for the borrowing is a warrant article, and that's the point where a hundred people or more will be standing in the room and want to know more specifics.
Mr. Chairman, I, I hope they bring the IT support guy there that night, because he, when he spoke that first night, he seemed to know his stuff. I would just thought they would have flushed out more details as far as.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm putting it on. I'm just concerned about the detail. There's nothing preventing them from coming back with a lower number if they, if, if they evaluate their overall plan for, for, for the upgrades.
So they're, they're, they're going to go to town meeting for permission to borrow six hundred and thirty-two thousand. If they only end up borrowing five hundred and eighty thousand, and then they'd spread that out over how many years? That's what would be the impact of the debt exclusion, just like we have.
Yeah, we did that for the town hall.
We rescinded money. You have, you have a certain, the capacity within that number that you actually borrowed and that you got permission for. And over time, after you pay off projects where you actually borrow the money, you then want to get rid of that percentage of that, of the capacity that's outstanding and get it off your books because it, it impacts your bond rating and impacts your, you know, your power to, to borrow. So, yes, there's not, if they end up spending less, it certainly.
I'm just thinking if they reevaluate it based on our sharing that memo, could anybody know if that all went to the school committee as well? That's what I quit, to the chair, the, the school committee had to make the request to rescind.
Correct.
Correct, right.
Yeah, we did it with the town hall. We had authorized one point five million. We only borrowed nine hundred thousand.
Correct. I think it's a multi-phase project as well, so I, I only hope that the next request would be lower if they had excess capacity in this number. That the next, the next round of borrowings would be, would be less, but this is just.
If they broke it up and did.
Yeah, this is only phase one. This is, there's more to come.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, what do you want, questions first?
You're, you're going to vote to advise me to request the town clerk to have these questions.
You word however you want. I'll make a motion of who press question.
I need a motion to, from the board to ask the town clerk to put all three of these questions in their present format on the ballot. I'll notify her tomorrow.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor?
All right. Is that a state statute has to be motioned? Or are you just being picky?
No, that's good.
Just being adamant is the difference.
Like the, we, oh, you were there when we did the feasibility study? So the feasibility study, the state, did you go to that town meeting? Remember that? I'm talking to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at Tony. I'm sorry.
And it was, what was it, six hundred and thirty thousand? But the way the motion read, if you were in favor of it, you had to vote against it.
Oh, yes.
It was different, right.
And I got that article. I was confused myself, so thankfully it went that night.
I think you voted right, though.
I think I did. I don't, I don't remember.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to apologize to anyone who's, any tech, tech, techies out there in my description of a switch. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
Well, I think the email we got today kind of broke it down pretty good. I still don't understand it, though. And hopefully that gets forwarded up and they can copy it. I hope.
Depends on a lawyer.
Well, it depends where I work. Sometimes I.
It's more money than a lawyer for a piece of.
Warrant?
Warrant.
Any questions on what we've done so far?
Mr. Chairman, can we do, go through and do the whole thing?
And do it all one shot?
So what we usually do is we usually go through every article, go through it, and then there'll be a motion.
Or, or there'll be, does anyone like to hold on the items? Right.
When someone says three, eight, twelve, we'll hold three, eight, twelve.
And we'll hold one.
Put all the other ones on the warrant and then we'll come back.
Just say as we go. We'll go through each one. If you want to hold it, say hold. As we go, we'll go through each one. If you wanna hold it, say, hold it right now, we'll vote to block and then come back to those. Okay? That's how we always do it. Don't try to change the process here, Mr. Garrett.
And you're off.
Wow.
Does he have a short timer, so he's trying to influence his uh.
Pressure.
His authority.
Article one is to balance this year's fiscal budget, fiscal year 2014 operating budget, uh, by transferring money to free cash. We have shortfalls in snow and ice, shortfall in general liability insurance, and if we are to start the parks and rec program um in June, we would need to use that transfer of money to do that. Obviously, if town meeting didn't support parks and recs, um, or the override didn't support, we wouldn't spend this money. It would just roll over to free cash next year.
What's the insurance for, Adam?
Uh, we had, we had to take on, when we took on Maple Street School, we had to pay additional insurance. So it's, that's not the exact number, but that's, I'm I'm short. Article two is um all of the permissions to write reports, uh, write and receive grants, and all the revolving funds. The two new ones this year are council aging and stormwater. E and H. Questions on those?
I have a question on that, on one of those. Take it up now, or we hold it?
Uh, if it's a question.
We'll hold it.
Let's hold.
Yep.
Article three is fixing the salaries of elected officials for 2015. The only change is for the treasure collector and the town clerk, the same 1.3% increase as article four, the personnel bylaw folks.
What's the board of selectmen again?
Same.
Who made that motion, John?
I should have saved it till this moment, huh? To 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 really reduce the.
What's one for the, what's 1.3 times zero?
Oh, nine, I tried. I made the motion of zero, but I, I could, I could only get three votes to go to 1,000, so until you came on.
I should have saved it for the right moment.
You're right.
See, those are things we've been doing.
You know what? Cause, you know, talking to a bunch of selectmen and some reps and stuff doing this state rep thing. As far as I know, we're the only selectmen that don't get paid in the area, and the only one. Which is a travesty, along with John getting his road done before I got mine done. I know it's in there.
That's how you think you got his road done?
I know, I know.
Questions on article three or article four? Article four is personnel bylaw, people, 1.3% increase, which is the consumer price index as recommended by the personnel board.
That's all the way through, right?
All the way through. Article five is the school department budget. It's drafted such that it's broken down. It's all one article this year. It's not two articles, it's one article. All the dollar amounts are broken down on items one, two, three, and four, in terms of the um minimum local contribution, transportation assessment, debt service, and then the additional local. And then the last sentence states that it's um contingent upon two and a half override referendum, which you set earlier tonight, is 538-482. Questions on five?
So the difference with, okay.
I will have a question on that, but.
Where are you, John?
All article.
Well, if I could just ask a question, so just just to understand. So last year, we broke the, we we did the operating assessment in in one motion, and then.
What I did was I took number four and put that in a separate question.
That's where you're.
That was last, last year, that was in a separate.
Right.
Okay. All right. No, no further question. We can move on that.
Article six is the petition article?
Yep.
We went over earlier tonight?
Yep.
Article seven is the town budget. So what I did was I put article six in front of article seven and eight. Now, article seven and eight, eight is new, because what that does is it takes the override portion out of the general budget. If this, we didn't have that issue. That 484, that's an article eight, would be included in article seven to get you the 8.8 million. Okay?
Okay.
So what I did was, uh, I took it out, article seven, if that goes through, it goes through, it's not gonna pin upon an override. Article eight, if it goes through, it's contingent upon an override, if it passes. Then if the override fails, then then obviously this article technically doesn't pass, because it was contingent upon an override.
Okay.
Okay? I put articles.
So we won't have to come back if it fails.
Correct. Article six I put on so that um if it, if if um if it doesn't pass, um, then we would have to lower article seven by 100,000 dollars.
Right.
Okay? So my job will be between now and then to work with you folks on plan A.
To adjust, whatever.
What we would do.
Right. Which is what we talked about earlier.
Yes.
Okay.
Article nine is the water commissioner's budget. Article 10 is the sewer commissioner's budget. Article 11 is bay path assessment. Article 12 is Smith regional agricultural assessment. Article 13 is Tantasca non-resident evoke assessment. Article 14 is Norfolk County assessment. Article 15 is related to the capital plan. If you look at this sheet, that is the spreadsheet that we went over last week for the capital plan. So the only items that are being spent out of free cash in terms of uh capital would be 125 for the boiler and the underground tank removal. If you look at the capital uh request, what I did was, we talked about doing the stair treads, because I had money already in an account. What I propose to do is take 932, which is uh remaining in the library roof account, transfer that and add that to the stair treads resurface account in article 16. So that it's, we're not using free cash to do it. Okay?
Okay.
So, and then by doing that, you leave that 117 in free cash to roll over, as you talked about. Article 17 is the uh capital efficiency plan for the water department. I believe that leaves them 25,000 dollars in retained earnings that will roll over to the following year. Article 18 is 130,000 dollars for sewer system repairs. That will leave them about 7,000 in retained earnings that will roll over to next year. Um, article 19 is coming from overlay surplus. That's to do a revalue of all existing personal property. Article 20 is the borrowing question for the school district. As I mentioned before, so this gives them the authorization authorization to move forward with the borrowing. The debt exclusion would allow them to structure, uh, give them permission, give us permission to tax, tax people the additional amount that they borrow over uh plus our, you know, factoring in our assessment with these book field. Um, I guess one question for the district will be, what happens if one town passes and one town doesn't? But we'll give that to them.
Two towns district goes away.
Well, actually, if article 20 passes in both towns.
If the article 20 passes what?
If article 20 passes in both towns, they can move forward with the borrowing. Or if the debt exclusion didn't pass in either town, they could still move forward with the borrowing.
Right.
But the towns wouldn't be able to tax the additional amount.
So that's a good one.
That's.
So then we just have to pay the bill without being able to raise the extra money.
Okay.
Is that, uh, in the case of article 20, is that why we can't give, why we don't have, or would we have a an impact on on the tax rate?
You don't know, because you don't know what, I mean, what I've done in the past is I've taken, borrowing, stuck into the ladder truck. And I worked with Southwest Bank, our uh our bank, in terms of, they would provide me a breakdown of, you know, if I wanted a five-year even principal, you know, seven-year, you know, reduced principal, um, you know, five, seven, 10 years, and they would give us the different um formats and what those were. And then I'd work with the assessment to provide the impacts, and then I'd bring those to the board, and then the board would decide whether they did a five-year, seven-year, or 10-year, and then determine, um, you know, even principal, et cetera. So in this case, it's it's up to the district to provide, you know, what they're thinking and what their different scenarios are in terms of borrowing. Um, and then we can certainly work with them in what the impact would be.
Okay, I just wonder why it wasn't on the, the one with the, you know, two overrides.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman. Can can I make a motion to rescind that question, and then we make this?
Contingent?
The question will still be the same. Can we motion, make, amend this to make this contingent on all of it? On the debt exclusion question?
I don't think so.
Cause otherwise, if the, if it passes the town meetings and the question goes down, next, we're gonna have to pay them another 500,000 dollars.
Spread out over so many years, yeah. Um, I don't believe so, Donnie. I I can understand if, I mean, because my, my understanding, my understanding is that you're basically saying yes or no to them to move forward. They've taken a vote. Now you're saying yes or no. It's different than budgets, it's different statute than 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 the.
I don't know what I'm asking. Have I ever come up?
My first, my first inclination is to say, no, you can't do that. Um, but um, do, if you would like me to add, could you sort of craft a motion that says if town council says it's okay, we'd like to make a contingent upon, or or on the debt.
Well, I'll make that motion if that is a.
So you wanna put a hold on this and then vote on all of it?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yep.
So two and 20.
Cause the ballot's gonna say the ballot.
Right.
Will we call Stan right now?
Yeah, get him on the phone.
Is too late for him?
I don't know.
Maybe not.
So, article 21 is the sale of land.
Yep.
To Charlie's Diner. Article 22 and article 23 are pilots or tax agreements for solar projects, one on Treadwell Drive and the other on at the Abbey. I just have to fill in the um the acreage um and the amount of megawatts on the uh on article 23. Otherwise, that article's okay. And that's your warrant. So we can go back to.
Go back to two.
Which ones, when I list which ones were hold held, and then.
I meant to put a hold on on six as well. I'd just like a little discussion about the the local meals outside.
All right, so we're gonna hold.
One, two.
So two, six, and Donnie, we get an answer on the uh.
Uh, John had a question on number two.
Yeah, what's.
Yeah, so we're gonna start on that.
Six, I'll go back to two.
Six.
Yep.
I had, I'll.
And 20, two, six, and 20.
Right, do you wanna, well, do, usually what we do is we vote on all the other ones, set them, and then come back to two, six, and 20.
Wait till Mr. Bertie.
Do you wanna do it differently, and just I'll answer the questions?
No, I think you can go ahead and put what we already put through.
Yeah, cause he's not, he didn't wanna hold, hold him, so he can go ahead and vote for it.
So I then detained that motion.
All the other articles that were not held besides two, six, and 20?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the articles in the warrant outside of article two, six, and 20 as written.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
He didn't answer.
So let's go to, let's go back to two.
I I hadn't, it was a question about what it does not include, unless I've read it too quickly. Is there a, do we do a fund for the veterans' office for when they was, so they can receive donations from the community?
Um, yeah.
They already have that.
Yeah, it's not a revolving fund. I don't know why we didn't do it the other way. Um, I think this, yeah, I don't know why we.
No, he has it because we went through that.
He did, but I remember he received like a 500.
You got donation from Lake Street.
Yeah, so what we have is we have um, we have a, an account, uh, the treasurer keeps track of that account. Um, I'm not sure why we didn't do it as a revolving fund. Um.
I remember, I just.
Yeah.
Just another revolving fund, is something whole different?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact.
Was it because it's reimbursed by the state? Did that make a difference?
No, it has nothing to do with that. What he does is he takes that money and he buys Christmas baskets.
Yeah, that's what.
He buys one?
Christmas baskets.
Oh, right, right, right.
Um.
And and also, just a little flexibility. I I, is it exclusively Christmas? I guess some other discretionary.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
Assistance?
Yeah.
I can't remember.
Okay. But we're, but we're covered there. You're saying we still receive the whatever the vehicle is.
Yeah, and you you adopted, actually, a policy on it. Yeah, we did.
So what if it, just to clarify to the chair, if an organization wants to donate 500 dollars to the veteran's office?
Uh, we work with that existing account. I think in other cases, we have, you know, other departments have, you know, can accept donations, the senior center, library, animal control accept donations for if people wanna buy food for the animals at the kennel, they can do that, so we accept that. I think this, what this does, I think it allows, these revolving funds here allows for more than just, uh, it actually allows for, you know, set programs, you know?
Yep.
Where I think, you know, the stormwater one, actually, we're going, we're targeting a certain program, council aging, there's a little flexibility in terms of the use, in terms of what it can be used, but um, I think the goal is to uh expand certain programs that uh wouldn't necessarily be be offered. Rather than a donation as it comes into the veterans' office, and it essentially goes back out as a donation. I can't remember if that's the, I apologize, I can't remember if that's the, the. One's recovered.
So we are right with two?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve article two as written.
Right.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's go to six.
Those are five, six, yeah.
This is on the meals, John, you wanted to go to?
Oh, yes, I just wanna un-understand. We uh, we, we had this conversation, really, for Adam, just to 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 get it out in the open. This is, this is, this has been presented, it's it's a petition article. So what do we accomplish by voting for? Do we just agree to it or acknowledge it? We not, there's something we could.
You have to vote for.
Yes.
The board right now technically does not have to vote at all to put it on the warrant. It's on the warrant, because it came through as a petition.
Okay.
So there's no um, no motion required for you to put it on or or sit and say, you you can't, and also, at the same time, you can't vote to.
Take it off.
Take it off.
The only articles we confuse to put on are the ones that usurp our executive authority. Like, somebody can't come and put up an article on to spend a billion dollars and, you know, and not fund it, or raise taxes, that's under our, our executive authority.
Well, that's the other thing. We've had articles in the past, I remember one a couple of years ago, to buy a certain land for a senior center, and build a certain senior center, but there was no appropriation attached to it. So it was ruled out of order.
And then there was, there was one for debt exclusion, that was um.
Which you can't do.
Yeah, which you you can't, you can't do, that was town, I can't remember, but it was, it was because of our executive authority, you can't, I can't remember.
I remember it came in.
It was a long time ago. And that's what town council said. You can't usurp the executive authority of the board's program, but this doesn't fall under.
I thought there was one two, three years ago, too, I forget.
Well, that was senior center, the same year the land thing came up.
No, but not the, not the art, warrants, but I thought there was also an attempt to put a.
It was, that same year, for the senior center.
Okay.
It was like 250,000 or a million, or whatever it was.
They wanted to buy a lot of something, didn't they?
It was for a senior center, yeah. But, yeah, we couldn't.
Cause there was no way to appropriate.
It wasn't written right, no, yeah, it was, it was written wrong.
I just wanted to, Mr. Chair, just to, just to make sure, I, I realize we'll have an opportunity on on the floor of of the of the town meeting um to talk about it, but I just would like to, you know, state my opposition to the, you know, to the, to the local meals tax. I I don't think it, we should be adding to the cost of anyone doing business in in this town. I think it's a uh, it it sets a, I think it opens, opens the door a little bit here, and I can see it's something that's, it could be growing in the future, and to be, to the point where it becomes burdensome for, you know, for for restaurants. I know that it's a, it's a cost being passed along, but it's still the cost of of doing business, the cost of purchasing um a meal at that restaurant. And and I I I hope, I made some calls today just to get some reactions to it, and I will, you know, continue, you know, to do that. I I I think restaurants need to speak up, because, you know, it's it's targeting, you know, one aspect of business. I mean, what what kind of business is next for a kind of special targeting? It's a, I think it's a kind of a you know, we are the majority, and it's gonna get, it's gonna be, and it might very well pass, because people thinks it's just being passed along. It's it's people outside of town who are gonna be, gonna be paying it along with, along with residents. But I just, it's, I think it's it's dangerous, and I I don't like to see that precedent set. I think it's, it comes back to my desire to, to, you know, to to seek yes, first try and find some savings before we reach for low new taxes. But, you know, that's just my statement. I'll pursue that.
Just one, one suggestion, John. I, uh, one business owner you may wanna reach out to is Chris Bowen. He's on the finance committee.
Yes, I, Tony said that he was.
He was the one who moved up first at um, at the finance committee, and that's kinda the thing I, where where it had sprung from there, so.
I will. I was glad, I was interested to know that, 'cause I'm I'm really just trying to gather information and and.
Correct.
Oh, and that's fine, but you know what? We can't debate that tonight, so let's decide what we're gonna do.
It's on the warrant. I would, I would like to make a motion.
So again, you don't have to vote at all.
That can stay. Now we're gonna go on to 20. And you didn't get an answer, so you would have got the pleasure, Mr. Bert.
You wanna craft your motion such as.
No, I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
Just go run with it as it is.
Because they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to justify this at town meeting, and if they come with that, it's not gonna pass, so I'm good.
That's a bad idea.
But Donnie, I'd like to understand what your concern was. Are you afraid it's gonna be a lump sum all of a sudden due?
Well, cause they could. They, I mean, they could.
They could borrow two years, they could borrow this.
They could borrow, so we're gonna be 80% of that, which is almost 500 grand, which is about 500 grand.
Right.
They could say, we're gonna borrow in a year, and you owe us 500,000.
Right.
Which would be irresponsible, and they'd all get thrown out of office and strung up in the city square.
The pain would happen.
But, so they can split that over five years, if it's 100 grand a year.
We have no control.
Responsibly.
The real, the real concern, Donnie, has that is if the old, if the debt exclusion does not pass.
We still have to pay.
You have to, you still have to pay, whatever, whether they do one year, two year, five years, 10, you're still gonna have to pay. The problem is, you're not gonna be able to increase the levy to pay for that, so it means you're gonna have to cut town budget to pay for it.
Worst-case scenario, if these pass at both town meetings and it goes down at the polls, they can then say, we borrowed for one year, you owe us 500.
Right.
And there's nothing stopping them from doing that.
Correct.
Besides getting strung up in the.
But that's one of the questions, they should be, should be prepared to answer and and.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
At town meetings, what's the structure of the bottom is gonna be.
Because when we did it for the feasibility study, Roger Parfrant was there, he explained it all, and I, I think that was a five-year, five-year borrower.
For the feasibility study?
Yeah, I think it was, so.
That one we absorbed without a debt exclusion.
We did.
That was, that was rooming forty thousand.
Yeah, so we did that, too.
Forty thousand dollars a year.
Yep. Forty-two thousand something a year we absorbed in the budget, without asking for more taxes.
Right.
John? The feasibility study, it was a payment every year, but we didn't, we just, we found that money, the forty-two thousand payment in the budget, without going to, um, a debt exclusion or anything.
Okay, so you wanna leave Twenty the way it is?
Yeah, alright.
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean the money to want it, but I, I kinda like to see if we could have that protection in there.
Well, and again, what's your pleasure, because, I mean, you can either vote, vote on this, which we have to vote tonight anyways, or you gotta take a vote tomorrow, tomorrow's the last day.
No, we're gonna do it now.
So you gotta do it now.
Well, if it's not legal, then you put it in the way it is.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we're not, you could make a motion that, I make a motion to put this.
Would you check in with town council?
If town council advises us that we are able to craft it such as contingent upon the passing of debt exclusion, I recommend we do so.
Then we do it.
You can make that motion.
That's right.
And if not, it goes on as it is.
You know what, I, I, no, I'm not, I, no, I want him to explain it on town meeting floor.
They would have to do that either way.
I know, I know.
I know, I know.
No, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know what you mean.
As if they put, let them.
No, no, you, I mean, if you, if that's your motion, that's fine.
Well, I, I wonder what the, the, the temperature of the board is, would, if I made that motion, would you, uh, or do you wanna?
I don't have an issue either way.
I would say no.
They still gotta, they still gotta sign it, and they still gotta stand up and account for what they're doing.
Okay.
If that, I, I just don't wanna get caught unprepared, that's all.
Would you mind taking this article at the town meeting, since you, I'm sure you know way more about it than any of us?
I will gladly take that article.
I mean, I'll go up with you, because I have my own questions, but as far as the technical questions.
Yep. No, I'll be prepared, prepared to, I was correct, I, I Googled real quick the.
Smack.
Because I'm on camera, so it just, the switches control the data, it takes desktops to the servers, they have to be.
Gotcha.
So, um, I, I, I'll let it go as, 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 I just didn't know what the rest of the board wanted to.
So let me get this clear, so this is nothing that, that ties this article to, to the override?
No.
No.
It's, it, we, we're, we're discussing whether to tie it to a required debt exclusion.
I'm sorry, the debt exclusion, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So there's nothing that ties it, I mean, they're, they're, we're requesting it, but we could still get that bill next year.
Right.
From the.
This is what happened with Bay Path, Bay Path, there was ten towns, but not all towns passed the debt exclusion.
Right.
So some towns are paying the bill for the Bay Path addition without being able to increase the levy.
We were the only town to approve it.
We did, we did both, we approved it at town meeting and we approved at the ballot, and, but there was, once it went down at one of the towns, uh, town meetings.
Were we the only one to approve it? Of the ten towns, right?
I think so, and then, so once, once it got to the, the town meeting, uh, one of the towns didn't pass, okay, then we had, then they had, they went through the process of a joint multi-town.
Election, yeah.
Election, which essentially acted as a, a joint town meeting, and then towns had to go back after that, if it passed, to go back and ask for the debt exclusion, but we already had the debt exclusion approved, it passed at the ballot the second time, we were all set, we were able to tax the additional levy to pay for the bill, but our towns, there's ten towns, not all of them.
I think we were the only ones.
No, I think there's other towns, I think there's other towns, there's other towns.
We're the only one that did your.
There's, there's, you know, six or seven of the ten towns that passed the, uh, passed the override.
I mean, just originally.
Originally, yeah, yeah. But then after that, towns had to go back, and if they didn't get it.
Yeah, because it was weird, like North Ox, whatever that meant was part of that, it was weird, the layout of it.
They were making cuts to, uh, to their budget to pay for the, for the bill.
All right. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to, uh, approve Article Twenty as written?
Up to you, Donnie.
Discussion, please, so why, so why wouldn't we take the, the step of tying this to the, you know, to the override?
The concern is, I, I don't know if the sta, I don't believe the statute allows you to do it, but I'm not the town council, we can certainly ask him.
Can we, does the vote contingent upon?
Which you can.
It's up to you.
Is my, is my, you want my thought, Mr. Chairman? No, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Uh, all I was gonna say is you can do that, subject to town council, uh, checking with town council, but you still gotta approve something here tonight, so, I mean.
John, I was gonna do the same thing, but I don't think there's three votes to.
Here's my, here's my thought, though. I don't think we should be half, we should be, have to babysit the school committee, and I think there's some new members on there, and I don't think even if this failed, that they'd saddle us with five hundred grand or even two hundred grand.
They wouldn't go through the borrowing?
Oh, I think they go through the borrowing.
If the debt exclusion didn't pass?
Oh, I think they definitely.
Absolutely, because, I mean, from, from the presentation we got, it certainly sounds like they need to, and I think Tony can verify that. I, I don't, I don't think, and then with some new members coming on, I don't think, I, I think the old school committee would have done that. I think this new school committee with the members coming on, I don't think that they would do that. I don't think they'd say, it's one year, you owe us five hundred.
Exactly.
Well, I don't need that.
So you're thinking worst-case scenario, we owe a hundred grand in five years, we have to cut the town twice a hundred grand.
Right. Right.
But I think, I think we should.
I would entertain either motion, uh, obviously the chair doesn't make the motion, so it's entirely up to you.
Hearing what we're hearing, well, let's go forward with it, I, you know, I, I like the protection, but I don't have, they're gonna have free votes to, to get it passed, so that's why I made the motion to.
But, Mr. Pepe, the one thing I will say, if that, if you'd rather go the other way, it's up to you entirely to make that motion, and not because whether you think you have one vote or two votes.
Yeah.
I think that's the critical part.
I think he's chastising you, I think he's schooling you.
Yeah, I'm breaking this one down.
He's just giving you all of your options.
I am.
Playing it all out.
I, I'll tell you what.
I am, because I want everybody.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Article Twenty contingent on a debt exclusion being approved at, uh, town meeting.
If it's allowed by town.
If, if it's legal and allowed by town.
If not, it goes this way.
Right, it goes this way.
Now I have a motion.
I have a second.
The second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Uh, uh, don't touch me.
You're doing the right thing, I'm glad you pointed that out, I, I missed that.
But, and you know.
What was the vote on, three, two, pass?
Three, two.
So, and then the only other thing, if they come to town meeting with what they gave us.
Not a problem.
Unless they stack that room full of teachers.
And I do.
I, I agree with the.
And that's too bad, because it sounds like they really need that.
I agree with everything you said, I just wanna try to, if we can't protect us in any way.
I'm putting my trust in the school committee this time, whereas last year, that wouldn't happen.
Okay, you're gonna have at least three new members.
I know, exactly, exactly, so.
And you're right.
Benefit of the doubt.
Yeah.
Historically.
What else you got?
I believe that takes care of all the town administrators' report. Last thing on the agenda is, uh.
We have one.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman.
Let's do this.
I called you about this, Mr. Fritz Con, I saw something, Mr. Fritz.
Mr. Fritz?
Wisconsin, Con.
That Bo, Robert, Bo Fritz, you.